Let's call this meeting to order. Treasurer, could you take role?
Sure.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Not here tonight, he has some family business to attend to.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso? Here. Stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. It's part of the meeting where we talk about our district goals, they're all, it's what we do here. So, the first goal is student achievement, that's our main goal, and we focus all our energy on it. We're gonna hear some creative ways of how we're driving student achievement tonight, which is gonna be excellent. So I'm looking forward to that. The second goal is financial prudence, and we take that very seriously, we try to maximize every dollar. We're in a struggle right now with state funding cuts, that's why we've got a levy on the ballot. We're asking, we're asking for your support, we're asking to see if, you know, put it out there for a vote, see what people think. We think we've earned it, and it's proven value, so we're working hard for you, but we're maximizing every dollar we get. And the third is community engagement, and we rely on the community to help us wherever we can. We know we've got subject matter experts in the community who help us with everything, from insurance to buildings, to all kinds of stuff, education, reviewing textbooks, all kinds of things. So we greatly appreciate that, and we thank you all for your continued support. With that, that brings us to our superintendent's report.
Before that, Mr. Neso, we have a public comment.
Oh, sorry, I got two of them tonight, too. That's great. George Appleby? When you have three minutes, could you state your address, and then try not to yell at us or use names, or... Thank you.
George Appleby, 12669 South Churchill Way. I'm actually here to support the levy, and give a little, you know, kudos to you guys for the past 11 years that you guys have actually ran without any additional funding over the past 11 years. And also talk about, you know, the reason why this levy should be passed, right? The programs that it allows the kids to have around extracurriculars, those types of things. If you really look at what we're investing in, it's the future, right? And it's the kids that we're investing in. So the small investment from a tax increase that people will see, I'd really like to see this levy pass, because the property values of the community and that type of stuff will actually increase. If we have good school district, the overall programs that are in the school district, you got, you know, the security of the elementary schools that would have to potentially go away if it doesn't pass, right? There's certain things that we as parents of the community need to understand. Our kids are, we're making an investment in our kids, so let's make that investment, let's vote for the levy, and hopefully it passes.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Thank you very much. We have one other public comment, Tom Zirko. You restate your address, and you have three minutes.
Evening Board, fellow residents. Tom Zirko, address is 20419 Marar Circle in Waterford. And I am going to, ditto is what he said, first it's the kids, it's all about children, right? Second, here's why I'm here. I look at everything from a business standpoint, debits, credits, income, out, I run three businesses, okay? And this is from a perspective of somebody who's never had children in the city of Strongsville Schools. And my sons are 25 and 24. We were fortunate enough to go to St. Joseph and John, and then St. Ignatius. But here's why I'm supporting, and always advocate, supporting the school system. Not only from the kid's standpoint, but the financial standpoint. Alright, my home is my biggest investment, alright? You can go on the internet and find any kind of reports you want, Realtor.com is probably the biggest and most... They'll tell you about home values, and why it's important. One sentence from one report, I took it, and I think it kind of surmises what we're doing here. Do school districts influence home prices, or vice versa? Chicken in the egg thing. Here it is. Homes in the best school districts, on average, sell for higher prices than similar homes in less popular school districts. Guys, that's it, alright? End of story. I grew up in Parma, alright, graduated in '79. And at that time, the city of Parma had really good school systems. I go back there now, and I visit the old homestead, you know, drive by Parma High and Shile, where I went to middle school. I just can't believe what I'm seeing. And it's because they've got weak schools. No one supports the school systems. There's been a mass exodus out of it. Look at the home prices. They're plummeting. Why? A lot of reasons. But like this report says, school systems and home values are connected, they cannot be separated. And I think it's prudent from a financial standpoint to support your school systems. And this is from a person who has never even taken advantage of our city's schools. So, thank you for what you guys are doing.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, it makes a lot of sense, there's, you know, school, safety, business, I mean, that's what makes Strongsville Strongsville, and pride, right? And we all gotta get out there and show our pride. And we'll be doing that tomorrow night, it's football game. But, thank you, I appreciate for that. And that does bring us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. So at this time, I'd like to ask four of our sixth grade teachers to come on up to the podium. So as they come up, you know, about a year ago, I think we talked with the board and the middle school chair with their community, that we needed to find more instructional time, especially in our sixth grade level in ELA and math. So a few years ago, or last year, we were, what, 39 minutes on average? 39 minute class periods, and that's not even counting transition times and getting kids settled. But that's a short period of time for math and ELA instruction. And so, we worked internally with the middle school staff and with Mr. Dietrich, the principal, to say, how can we increase instructional time, while at the same time using the staff that we have available, or the staffing numbers that we have available? And so I thought it would be great to bring in four of our teachers. So Catherine Turk is up front there, she teaches sixth grade math. Jeanette Queen, sixth grade math as well next. Jamie Rabniky teaches sixth grade ELA. And brand new to our school district this year, Holly Ruman also teaches sixth grade ELA. I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to visit most of their classrooms, and it truly was a phenomenal experience for what they're doing with that time. And so I'm gonna stop talking, because it's most important for you to hear from them, about how they've been able to take this instructional time, bring it to life, and have a positive impact for our kids. So take it away.
Okay. Just can click this here. Alright, so what you see up here, kind of puts you in the place of a sixth grade math student, just for a minute. Right away, this starts our class off and kind of transitions everybody from the craziness of just, you know, being from class to class, and kind of gets them right in that math mindset, right off the bat. As soon as they walk in, they get a general idea of what they can expect for today, a quick little preview as to what they will cover. They'll have an idea of what their homework might be, so that by the end of the lesson, they have an idea where they're heading. Right there in the center is usually where we have some kind of question, or some kind of skill, for them to kind of just check in real quick. It might look a little different each day. Over here, and it might be a little difficult to see, but sometimes that quick check might be just writing on their desk, and it allows us a really quick answer, or a really quick opportunity to check in and see who's kind of following with what we're going over, who needs a little more reinforcement, and kind of who's well on their way and could use some enrichment. So what the 84 minutes has really allowed us to do, is take something that we were doing, which was a routine that we had in those 42 minutes, and we've been able to expand that routine to now have over the course of those 84 minutes. And with that, we're really not only focusing on, oh, I have to get to 4.2 by tomorrow. You really can focus on the quality of what you're doing. And students know what to expect every day when they come in. And that expectation might look a little different each day, but they know that they'll learn something new, they'll have a chance to apply it, really get a chance to ask questions, or, you know, have a review if they need it, and kind of move forward if they're ready for it. But the most significant part of having this routine through the 84 minutes is the opportunity to give kids that quick feedback. Like we said, with the opportunity to write on their desks, they love to do that, and it really has given them the chance to kind of, as you walk around, you can see who's following with you, who might, you know, need some one-on-one attention. And through that 84 minutes, we've even gotten a chance to almost touch base with every student in that class, one-on-one. And you really get to know where your students are at, which kind of leads to the next part, which is how we kind of encourage our students to be more engaged each day.
Okay, the ultimate goal as a teacher is to have your kids be engaged in what they are learning. We feel it's very important to empower them to have, take more of an ownership role in what they're learning. To do that, after teaching a skill, we may have three, say, three different activities, where they get to pick what they want to actually practice, or how they want to practice that skill. We might have one bin where it's the more challenging activity, so if they feel like they want to push themselves a little further, they would take from that bin. If they feel like they're right on target, and they, you know, they're right where they need to be, they could take from the second option. Or the third option is, you know, they still feel a little uncomfortable with the skill that they're learning, so they would get the opportunity to do more of a reteach. We would then send them off to a designated area around the room, where we become more of a coach, and we can walk around, and like Catherine said, we can, you know, if they're writing on their desk, or whatever they're working on, we can kind of guide them through what they're learning, and where they might have questions or need help. We also, to get them engaged, you know, the ultimate goal again, is to get them engaged. So we like to provide them with fun ways to practice math. So instead of just sitting at their desk and opening up a book, we do scavenger hunts, where they'll solve math problems and look for the answer around the room, so they're walking around, they're excited about learning. We do little mysteries, or scoot activities, just to get them moving around and excited about what they're doing, and not just sitting at their desk and kind of getting bored with what they're doing. Again, with that opportunity of choice, it just really empowers them to take ownership in what they're learning. An area that we feel we do need to work on is problem solving. So these 84 minutes are allowing us more time to give them more rigorous questions, where we can dissect them, and really look at what is the question asking. We could talk about what the math action words are, so they're more comfortable when they see these questions. They, you know, they're just a little bit more confident, and we build their stamina to be able to solve these types of problems. So that's how we enjoy our 84 minutes in math class.
So this is Language Arts, and if a student came into Language Arts, they would see a different board every day, which would have an agenda, just like what you see here. It would always start with an objective, they would have their homework assignment, so what you see is part of what they would have saw last week. We like to, one thing with the 84 minutes this year, we can do something as simple as a bell ringer, which sounds really simple, but with, you know, 40 minutes, it was just not possible. While we took attendance, every day they have motivational Monday, try it out Tuesday. And we can take simple skills that we can't always, you know, we don't need forever to teach, but we can put it into our middle section there, and simply guide them with some type of response. So, you know, this last Thursday, I wanted them to reflect a little bit about their first quarter grade, make some goals for themselves for this quarter, just something very simple. We always have a meme of some type, just that relates, so we're doing a lot of writing right now. So the meme just kind of gets some smiling when they come in. And, you know, the homework and a reminder. So that's just a little bit about what they will see when they walk in. We're gonna talk a little bit about the daily schedule, and then I'll come back in just a minute.
So what the daily schedule looks like in Language Arts class with this 84 minutes. Once they are engaged, they done their bell ringer, they're ready to go. We get to engage in that reading part the first half of the block. They're doing that read of the text not once, not twice, but a good three times. We are following that close reading strategy, they're getting that multiple exposure to the text, digging deep into that story, coming back, text evidence, details. Before, we were only hitting surface level. That second half of the block, we're really focusing in on that writing instruction, maybe before, just hitting, you know, today we're gonna do graphic organizer friends, tomorrow maybe we'll do our rough drafts. We're engaging in a full writer's workshop. Rough draft, graphic organizer, revise and edit, and then, you know, the final piece is that final copy. So engaging in the full writer's workshop, and then that last component, the grammar piece, that has so been lost. Really focusing in on those mini skills of grammar that we have really been lost, as you can see in that picture, in the bottom right-hand corner. Commas have been a real struggle for sixth graders, so to make it more hands-on for them, this was just last week, they took the comma rules we've been learning in class, they wrote them on the desk, and to make it more hands-on, and for our tactile learners, they took Play-Doh, and they put the comma to bring it to life, they put the comma with Play-Doh inside of the sentence. And if they had it in the wrong place, peers would get up and move it where it needed to go, and would use the comma rule packet to justify where it needed to go. So not only were they using their comma rules, but they were getting up, getting engaged with the grammar piece. So now we're gonna kind of focus on the goals of our Language Arts class.
So with our goals, obviously our number one goal is for the students to love reading. A lot of times, the kids come in, and I'm shocked to see that so many already love it. But then we give them, you know, here's what you have to read, here's what you have to read. So going into that choice, and with 84 minutes, we've been able to bring back that independent reading into the room, where they can choose what they want to read. And again, the picture up there, we're able to go outside, and, you know, spend some time when it's nice, and just find a spot, find a group, and read. So developing that love of reading and writing, obviously, is the number one goal. Student choice is a huge goal of ours, we want them to be engaged. As a matter of fact, our UDL that we're focusing on this year is on relevance. So we want what they're doing to be relevant and engaging for them. So we have, you know, a purpose for everything we're doing. With reading for a purpose, that kind of goes back to the close reading. When we look at a text three times, we're looking at it for different reasons. On the first time, just to say, oh, this is what it's about. The second time, you know, we'll look at author's craft, why the author is writing, we'll look at figurative language, any of those pieces. And then, you know, the third time, we dig even deeper, and we might answer some questions that are higher level thinking. And finally, as far as a goal, it's just time, we just get to spiral a lot more. We get to go back to something, we get to reinforce it, we get to remediate. They just did a unit one assessment, now we have time to go back and work with those kids, and help them with what they didn't get right the first time. As far as the student success?
So our student success has been definitely our station work time. Before, with the 42-minute block, you didn't have time for stations. By the time you were explaining it, the bell had rang. So not only are we able to explain it, but they're able to engage in it, they're working with their peers. We're taking the backseat as the facilitator, and they're able to learn from one another. This allows time for differentiation. We're having all these different types of stations that are allowing for different types of learners to pick up and learn the way that they learn best, and we're able to get in different types of skills to be addressed at those stations. So maybe we're having our grammar station and our writing station in that as well. This also allows for choice, so having those choice stations for students to pick up in. And we're also having that relevance piece and connections being made throughout the stations.
So our final comment is if we haven't convinced you on our benefits, maybe our students can. And so we asked a couple students to just let us know, why do you like 84 minutes? And you can read the results, but, you know, I think that most are happy, no one ever feels like, oh my gosh. And more or less, they're like, wow, it's over. That I can't believe it's over already, so, thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. I mean, I like the idea of showing them exactly what's gonna happen that day, because that open-endedness, maybe if they're nervous, the fear of it, what are we gonna do today, how far are we gonna go? I mean, I think it's really, it's really, and it's shown in the grades, so that's really exceptional. I applaud you all for developing this and implementing it.
Thank you, thank you.
So the one thing I'll say is, 84 minutes and developing the schedule is the easy part, right? The tough part is bringing it to life, which the teachers did. And I know you make it sound simple when you come up here and talk about it, but it's a lot of work. It's hard work. When you talk, I mean, I used to teach math years and years ago. And, you know, having all of those different levels, and I don't know if everybody heard what they were saying, but it's not just about, hey, we're learning this concept, and here's one way to learn this concept. We're creating three different pathways for students, and not only are they creating three different pathways, but they're giving students choice. And so there's such a power in learners self-assessing themselves and saying, here's the path I'm in. When I was in Catherine's classroom, she had that for her kids. And for kids to have the chance to reflect, and it was color-coded, right? One was pink, one was green. And have the kids to say, you know what, I think the pink track is for me, but you know what? I'm gonna stretch myself today, and I'm gonna go with the green track a little bit. So the work that they put in, and the other thing that I guess I'll just say is, I think I visited on a random Wednesday. And so this is just a part of their daily practice. What they do on a daily basis for our kids, and as I shared with Jamie earlier, and I truly met it, you know, I never taught Language Arts, characterization is a concept that I probably learned a long time ago. But man, I knew characterization after I went through six of those stations, and I think there was a video in one, and then definitions we had to put in buckets, and then, you know, pictures we had to draw. I had it down, and the kids did too, and so...
I want the comma rule package, because I know I'm not using them correctly. I just throw them wherever they want. Maybe send me that when you get a chance.
That's right. So just thank you to our teachers, and they represent, they're four of the 16 that teach English Language Arts and mathematics in sixth grade, and just doing a phenomenal job, and I think exemplifies, you know, taking an idea, taking a structure, and bringing it to life, so thank you very much.
Does it help having the sixth grade in the middle school, so you can all be together? And, yeah?
Absolutely.
So that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you very much for coming in and taking your time, we really appreciate it.
Cameron, I don't know if we want Aaron to comment, or the teachers, but one of the impetus is what, for this was, we had deficiency in math and Language Arts on our testing. When should we start to reap those rewards? When should I be able to measure improvement?
Well, we have seen significant improvement. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think it was like 12% or 13% in one school year. And I believe, again, if I remember, whether it was sixth grade or seventh, I think they missed the 80% by one student. I can't remember which.
Sixth grade made it.
Sixth grade made it, that's right. Seventh grade was by one student, that was it. So, sixth grade made tremendous gains, and they started that back fall last year. You know, I remember having conversations with sixth grade Language Arts representatives about the new series that they were using. So I think we're just seeing the tip of the iceberg last year with the efforts that they did within 40 minutes, and now getting 84 minutes. They made it last year, we should continue to see significant gains. I think it was math that just missed by a small margin, but made significant gains. So I have no thoughts otherwise, then we should continue to see those significant gains this year and moving forward.
So we should, I mean, we should be able to meet indicators starting now. So we'll see those results on the next, on the next report card.
We did the sixth grade this year, right?
Sixth grade Language Arts, we did, sixth grade math, we just missed it by a few, but I think it was like 12, 13% increase that they had in one year. Which when you look at 12, you're looking at 50 or 60 more kids meeting the indicator in one year's time. And that's what they did with 39 minutes a day, so...
Do you think we're reading a lot, as far as the amount of reading that we do?
They just gotta go up there, so everybody could hear. Yeah, okay. I think she said we've increased writing a tremendous amount in what they do, right? That's what she was saying, okay.
Has there been any discussion that if this is working at the sixth grade level for core subjects, we need to watch if the, if when they become seventh and eighth graders, if they start to fall back, do we follow this model through the other grades?
Well, right now, we have the double period in English Language Arts. So we put that into place. For math, it's based on student need. So if the sixth grade teachers see students that may benefit from that. So the only, the only grade level at the middle school where truly everybody goes back to a traditional class period is at the eighth grade level. And just with the extracurriculars and opportunities, and preparing for a high school-like schedule, we left it at that traditional period schedule now, but seventh grade currently has it.
And I had a question. On the English Language Arts, the writing process that, is that the same process that you're trying to reinforce for seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth? So you're laying the groundwork in sixth grade for them to carry it through, all through high school?
Yes, so the program that we're using is being used throughout high school. So we're experiencing it first and sixth grade.
Right.
We're trying, now that we have our coaches, to start that more in the fifth grade. So when they come to us, they're a little bit more ready for the intensity.
And know the terminology, if nothing else, right?
Right, well, yeah, and that's the hard part, because the series is pretty, it's great, but it's very rigorous and difficult for the kids at first. So, you know, we have to train them to do a process like close read, and the writing, and, you know, they're doing it in the elementary schools, but they haven't used the same type of materials that are a little bit more text-heavy, and, you know, nonfiction. So that's becoming a little bit more of a challenge. But, you know, I think we're already seeing it, I'm talking to seventh and eighth grade teachers, and they're seeing from last year what we've done, so it's making their life easier. We're just hoping that we can build that bridge from fifth to sixth, and, you know, when they come into the middle school, they'll have a little bit more.
And then, are they reading out of the textbook? Are they reading on their Chromebook, or what medium are they using?
So they have a text, it's a soft text with different materials. It's nothing, you know, there are a lot of shorter articles now, because in the real world, that's what we're gonna be reading. We still do read fiction, so we read off the computer, so we'll go onto Newsy LA or Readwork, so they're seeing all different types of text material, so it's not just one type.
Right, and are they able to like highlight and do things?
Yep, they can do that in their book, and we're teaching them to annotate, write their thoughts. You know, that's been kind of tricky, because they think it, but they don't want to write it, you know, but highlighting it, and that's part of that first read, that second read, finding, highlighting. So yeah, our book allows them to do that, which is really nice.
So what would you need from us to help facilitate your program? Are you, everything's good, is there something you're lacking?
Okay. Our middle school is not one-to-one yet on Chromebooks, but that would be something that would be extremely helpful. I wasn't gonna bring it up, but, since it came up, yeah, that would definitely be helpful for us, with the math and the Language Arts. We've struggled a little bit with that this year, not having the resources. I know that our book and both the math have online sources, that when you have five teachers sharing those Chromebooks, you know, and then they're not all working at the moment. It does bring us to have to do other things instead of that. Not that we would use that all the time, but if we had that at our fingertips a little bit more, it would be a lot easier. But, we're working around it.
Jamie, how many cards do you have per team?
Less than last year, because they went one-to-one, so, and we, I think, got, you know, what was ever left from that. So we have about 50 Chromebooks that work well on any given day. So we have like two 12 carts, and a full cart of maybe 28. So that becomes difficult when we have, you know, 30 in a class, you know, you have to sign out more than two half carts. So it's just, it's tricky. We work as a team to try to get around it, but it just, it becomes a challenge sometimes, so... That would be, you know, as far as that goes, I mean, the resources are great, the book's great, we, you know, some are like, is it too hard? I think it's, I think it's not, you know, we just, we have to work.
So how many more would you need?
I think we're about half, I think, with our sixth grade right now, so it would, I think we have 400 sixth graders. So I do know that we might have gotten about 100 more that have come into the school, so I think we're gonna work on. It's just that some of them are broken with not having them one-to-one, kids didn't always take care of them the best way, and so... But yeah, so I think we're about 100 to 200, and we would be at that level, so...
I had a question, one maybe more for Aaron or Cameron. But, and I understand that writing, and reading, and mathematics, basic math, is very fundamental to everything else you do. But do we see or anticipate any impact on the other subject areas, like science or social studies?
Well, so I teach social studies too. The Language Arts and the math teachers have a social studies class that they do. So I know last year as well, they helped us a lot by incorporating the writing into what they're doing. So we have a method that we use called RACE, where we cite evidence from the text, and we, you know, incorporate it into our answers. So with that being said, I know the other subject areas are doing that, and they're making sure it's going across curriculum. So yeah, I think it's gonna help all areas. But being the Language Arts teacher and the social studies teacher now, we know what we need to do in both.
You can cross-pollinate both ways.
Yes.
You can use the social studies and English class.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, it was excellent.
And that concludes my report.
That brings us to Board of Education, other, I know Colonel Duke Evans has some others?
Yes, I do. I had the privilege of going to our PTA council this morning and talked with the officers and, and representatives there. And there are several events coming up. There's a Rockin' at the Rec dance for sixth, seventh and eighth graders on the ninth of November, six-thirty to nine PM with a blackout slash white-out theme. On the twentieth of November, there's a Dare ice skating party over here at the ice skating rink from six to nine PM at the OBM Arena. That's supposed to be a fun event. On November the twenty-ninth, there's a Don't Be a Victim Workshop from six-thirty to nine-thirty at the Rec Center. Good, a good event, especially if you have anybody that's particularly easily intimidated or somebody that could use some pointers on how not be a victim. And on December the fourteenth, for fifth and sixth graders only, there's going to be a semi-formal Rockin' at the Rec, but it's gonna be at SMS, so it's Rockin' at SMS from six-thirty to nine PM. The other thing, I would remind everybody that Veterans Day is coming up on the eleventh. And as I always like to say, we have a, we have the privilege and we're very lucky in Strongsville, we have some very active veterans organizations, American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, which I belong to, very active and very helpful in the community, for those of you who don't know. The VFW for one, and I'm sure the American Legion for another, donates quite a bit of money to things like the Christmas lights that we see in the square and other activities across the city. And what I always like to say, because I'm in education now, is if you can read, thank a teacher. If you can read in English, thank a vet. So please take a moment, thank a veteran on the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. Naysel.
Thank you. I just want to thank, I'm excited for tomorrow night for the football game at Mentor. If you can make it out there, please do so, we could use a big crowd, the more the merrier. And we'll see how it goes, the weather's supposed to give us a little break, I think, later in the evening, so we should be okay there. Go Mustangs.
We have girls soccer in the regional finals. Sandusky High School at noon on Saturday.
And the boys?
Boys were eliminated last, last weekend.
Is that, we don't have executive session?
Nope.
Nope. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. George, can you take roll?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naysel?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at seven thirty, seven thirty-five.
Remember to get out there and vote, we need you.